All right, well, thank you everyone for coming. So you may notice that this is also a meeting because it's going to be more interactive. So we ask that you all please turn off your cameras and mute yourselves before we get started. I really appreciate that. So welcome all to the special phenology session. I am very pleased to introduce Lenka Klager, the Europe and Eurasia RCO. And I'm going to pass it right off to her to get us started. We have some teachers as well joining us today.
Thank you Grace and hello everybody, welcome to the session. The session will be about monitoring seasonal changes of trees and cooperation within the European Phenology Campaign. So my name is Lenka Klager and I represent Group Office for Europe and Euroasia. And I will be guiding you through this session together with two great and very experienced teachers with Anketza Veselic and from Osnovna škola Bania or Elementary School Bania and with Sniežana Markovic-Zoraya from Elementary School Dubovac. So I can reveal that both teachers, Anketza and Sniežana, they come from Croatia and they have been involved in the campaign for a very long time. So they have a great experience with the phenology activities and also with cooperation. So our program will be about fifty minutes from now. And you will hear a presentation from me, short introduction to the Phenology Campaign. Then you will hear a lot more from Anketza and Sniežana. And also we will have a time to discuss the second part of the webinar. Well, so I think that's enough to introduce the session and to introduce us. And now I would also be very happy to learn something from you. So we prepared for you two very easy and quick questions. And I want to ask you to answer this question via Mentimeter, which is an online tool. Now you can see already a link to Mentimeter in the chat. So if you click on this link, menti.com, it will take you to online voting where you will see two questions. When you answer these two questions, please just look back to Zoom, we will see the answers together. So once again, there is a Mentimeter link in Zoom, just when you click on it, you will open the voting tool. And you will see two questions. First one is, what is your favorite tree? Or a tree that you would like to learn more about, that you would choose for your observations if you did some? And the second question is, if you do have experience already with the phenology activities or with observing greening, greening down of trees? And I believe you managed to get to the voting tool, so I will share my screen to to see the results that I'm hoping we are getting. Yes, I can see already many answers. Perhaps you already know this word cloud tool. So the bigger the word is, the more people would like to follow this tree or the more favorite the tree is. So I can see many, many different trees. But on top of the answers so far is oak, which is, yeah, it's very common tree, and a maple. But we can see white ash, aspen, southern magnolia, banyan, American chestnut, giant sequoia, lime tree, sour cherry, coconut tree, and many more. The three species are as diverse as our globe group is. So thanks for your answers and let's see the answer to the second question. So yeah, we have many people, fifteen people who answered that you have experience with observing greening, greening down of trees and greening up, even sixteen people. And we also do have somebody with us who doesn't have the experience yet. So I really hope that the decision will be interesting for both groups, that we will bring some new ideas to those of you who already have the experience and that perhaps we will open this topic a bit to those of you who don't have the experience yet. So maybe we will even attract you to try globe phenology. So thank you very much for trying this activity, for your answers. Stop sharing the Mentimeter now. And yeah, let's go to the first presentation. So I will again be talking, I will share my screen now. And I hope you can see my presentation now.
All good Lenka.
Okay, thanks a lot Grace. So in my presentation, I will just like in quick describe what the Phenology Campaign is about, what activities it offers, how the collaboration within the campaign works, and what have you learned from the campaign so far. So we have been, yes, the campaign has been running for over six years now. And it's running always twice a year following the seasonal changes of trees. So schools are observing greening up of trees in spring and leaf color change and falling of leaves in autumn. In our Mentimeter, we could see the great variety of trees that would be interesting for observations. But for the purpose of the campaign, we had to make, choose only few species to have something in common, to have a possibility to compare the results, to have, you know, the same starting point for the school. So we have seven tree species that are common in Europe and Euroasia region. You can see them here at the bottom of the slide. We have about twenty-two countries that are actively involved in the campaign and these come mainly from Europe and Euroasia region. In each run of the campaign, there is between one hundred fifty and two hundred school teams involved, which means about three thousand active students every time. And the aim of the campaign or the reason why we started the campaign was that we wanted to offer the topic of phenology to schools. We wanted to have schools involved in this topic and in observing nature and of course support cooperation between the schools in our region. Here you can see the activities that are prepared for schools for the spring part of the campaign. The activities are created based on the Globe Green Up Protocol. Just the protocol is like split it into the different parts to guide schools through the whole spring, through the whole observation. So the activities start with choosing a tree and describing the tree and the site where it grows. Once this is done, then the school come to visit the tree regularly and look at the buds as it is written here, really. It's looking at the way how buds are changing, how they are growing, swelling. And a very important moment is when the bud bursts, when the buds like burst open. From that school, measure the leaf length and this is done until the leaves stop growing. And by this, all the participant gain a lot of data, which are within the fourth activity entered into the globe database. And schools use the data for creating different comparison either between different places, between different schools or between different years, seeing the change between the years, apologies. And the last activity is more about taking the students out and enjoying the colors of nature, looking at the nature. So creating a palette from a different color leaves. In autumn, again, we have activities based on the Globe Protocol, on the Globe Green Down Protocol. And we only have three activities. So again, the whole observation started with choosing a tree. It is the best if school keeps following the same tree all the time because then students can learn the most about the tree, about the place. But of course, it's not obligatory. And the core of the observation is following the color change of leaves. You can see here the Globe Plant Color Guide that is used to do it, to compare the color and like writing down the codes of the color and monitoring the change over the autumn. Once these data are collected and leaves have fallen down, there's again time to share the data into the globe database, compare them and use them for student research. Well, these were the phenology activities. But trees are clearly part of their environment and their seasonal changes are influenced by changes of the environment and also by the changing climate. So that is why the campaign offers additional topics and additional activities that allow students to see the changes in like broader context and to understand the importance of trees in relation to climate. So students can try measuring the tree height. They can measure precipitation and temperature in the place where the tree grows and see how it influences or correlates with the changes of the tree over the season. And we also do have a set of activities that is focused on the role of trees in the global carbon cycle. So it helps us to understand how trees influence the cycle and our climate. Well, I already mentioned that collaboration is very important for the campaign. So I will shortly describe how the collaboration works. The core of our collaboration is the one between schools. But we also cooperate with many scientists. We are very lucky to have a great group of scientists from different countries that support the campaign, that provide us information and give feedback to students projects. So this is really a great thing and motivating thing. Then the, another form of cooperation is with local communities. When students present their results to the local communities and they even plan different projects, yeah, different awareness campaigns, for example. There are different opportunities, different options, how to share results and experience within the Phenology Campaign. We have an online forum that is available at the globe website and serves as a place for sharing of pictures and for result and the results of schools. We also have Padlet where schools contribute with their examples of projects of good practice, good practice and inspire each other. Also, schools in the campaign use different online tools, different application. So we have a Grow Up application, which is very simple. Students take their phone out, they take pictures of trees and the application automatically changes the trees into a time lapse animation showing how the tree changed over the season. We also, of course, use Globe Observer and I have already mentioned the Globe Database. There are several webinars and online meetings organized as a part of a campaign and students can share their results there as well as they do in different globe meetings like outside of the campaign. For those who want to cooperate more closely, more intensely, the campaign offers so-called collaboration group where schools can cooperate in smaller teams that us as a campaign coordinators, we help them to create. And we help schools to exchange data and start the collaboration. But after that, it's all up to the schools that are in the group. So the forms of collaboration can be very diverse from exchanging the data on some regular basis to meeting on Zoom or planning even a research project together or live meeting. Schools that are active in the campaign are also awarded by certificates and by virtual badges that are uploaded to their school profiles such, you can see some examples of the badges here. So what we learned after the years or over the six years of the campaign, we learned that phenology or green down, green up observations are great as a starting activity in globe because it's quite a simple measurement. It doesn't require any expensive or special tools. So more or less anyone can join the campaign. It's also a good starting point for developing further cooperations for like going into the new themes, new topics and also for a cultural exchange. It's taking place a lot in, in the collaborations group in our region. So we are very happy for this, that schools often start with like phenological operation, but then they realize they have many more topics in common and they just focus on different topics later on. We also think that phenology is suitable for students of all ages. All students enjoy seeing how the tree is changing over the spring, how the leaves are growing or how they are changing colors. And then, of course, the younger students can focus more on arts, for example. And for older students, there's a variety of topics for different research projects. What we learned from the feedback from the campaign is that students enjoy being outdoors, that they enjoy exploring the nature, realizing that the trees are actually some living organisms that are changing and that need some conditions to live and finding out what these conditions are. And of course, students do enjoy using different applications. We also learned that the activities can be done by a group of students within the like classroom or it can be assigned individually to students, which was very helpful in the last two years when students often couldn't come to school. So they could like observe their own tree at their own garden and then share it with their classmates. And last slide, the challenges that we face in the campaign. We do face language barrier as Europe and Euroasia region is very rich with languages. So we have English as a common language for the campaign. But of course, it's not convenient for everyone to speak in English. Then even though the phenology activities are not difficult or very time demanding, still there is a time needed to do the activities, to go outside, visit the tree and even more for the cooperation. So this can be a barrier for many teams. And also, as we have now many schools participating with different age students with different level of experience with phenology or length of involvement in the campaign, we sometimes struggle to find a good level for everyone to, like good level of information or yeah, of the activities so that everyone can somehow use them. So this was a very quick overview of the Phenology Campaign. Thank you very much for listening. And I didn't really go into the details about phenology as such. But if you would like to learn more, there was a great session about green up, green down protocols yesterday. So everything about the protocols was described into a great detail and very clearly. So if you would like to learn more, I definitely recommend to listen the recording of the session. And now, if there are any urgent project, urgent questions, please ask. If not, we would go to another presentation of Anketza and Sniežana and we will have more time to discuss and ask question after that. So I will just quickly look, at the moment, I don't see any raised hands.
I don't think there's any questions at the moment Lenka. Just wonderful excitement for the campaign and a great project.
So that's great to hear, thanks a lot. Well, then I think it's really best to keep the questions for later because maybe many answers will be now answered by, many questions will be now answered by Anketza and Sniežana. So please, if you can go ahead and tell us about your projects.
Oh, please unmute, yeah.
Okay, unmute. Can you see our presentation?
Yes, perfect.
Okay. Hello, I am Anketza Veselic, I'm from Croatia and I work at Elementary School Bania in Karlovac as a chemistry teacher. Today, in this presentation, my colleague Sniežana and I will present our collaboration during the Phenology Campaign. My school participated for the first time in the Autumn Phenology Campaign in 2019. And the collaboration with the Elementary School Dubovac started in the Spring Phenology Campaign in 2021. We were observing birch, Latin Betula pendula, which is a characteristic plant species in Croatia. In total, we observed four birches. Three birches are located in town. This is birch one from Elementary School and birch one and birch two from Dubovac Elementary School. And one birch two from Elementary School Bania is in the suburbs. In 2021, when we started our collaboration, in addition to phenology observation, we also compared atmospheric parameters. The comparative graphs show that there is almost no difference in the current air temperature, amount of precipitation and relative air humidity as well as temperature, soil temperature at a depth of ten centimeters. We conclusion that atmospheric measurements do not have large deviations. We asked ourselves this year, can metro location affect on beginning budburst? We start our observation on February eleventh. Every Wednesday, we look out the birch trees and took photos by mobile phone and with the Grow Up application, we put pictures of our birch trees on the Padlet and compared them. Our first activity was to determine the location of our birches, measure the tree height, circumference and calculate the age of tree. Birch one is located in the Bania stricken in the schoolyard, is the oldest birch. She has seventy-six years. She's the highest and has the largest circumference of all birches we have watched. The second birch, birch two, is located in suburban area and in growths in the, on the largest elevation, two thousand nine meters. The other two birches observed by Elementary School Dubovac grow next to each other. You can see on the picture in their schoolyard and they are youngest observed birches. They have forty-six years. On February twenty-eighth, all the buds on our observed birch were dormant. The current air temperature was six, was six degrees. I can maybe this. On March ninth, all buds on our birch trees were swelling. The current air temperature was six degrees. On March sixteenth, the air temperature was higher, but the buds was still swelling. On March twenty-first, the buds on three birch trees are opened while the fourth birch bided a day later on March twenty-second. Current air temperature was eleven degrees or twelve degrees. And we concluded that there is almost no difference in the date of the beginning of budding. Our next, next activity was measuring the length of the leaves. In the beginning, the leaves grow more intensively on the birch trees in the yard of Elementary School Bania, which concluded, continued in early April, sixth April. This is plant of leaves on third in April. The average length of the leaves on April twentieth ranged from fifty-two to fifty-eight millimeters. On April twenty-seventh, the leaves were still growing. The leaf stop grow, growing on May fourth because we measured the same way on the May eleventh. Average land was fifty-two millimeters on birch one and fifty, and sixty-three millimeters on birch two of Elementary School Bania and sixty-one millimeters on birch one and birch two of Dubovac Elementary School. And now Sniežana will continue. Sniežana?
Hello, I'm Sniežana from Dubovac Elementary School. I am globe teacher, also biology and chemistry teacher. This is activity four in the European Phenology Campaign. Activity four is migraine update. All phenological measurements were entered into a globe database, so we made graphs for each tree. On the left side are the graphs of the greening of the Bania Primary School and on the right side are the graphs of the greening of Dubovac School. The graph on the left below shows the greening of the birch that is outside of the city on high elevation, while the other trees are in the city. The buds of all birches, birch trees started to swell from seventh to fourteenth March. You can see on graphs and budburst was on twenty-first to twenty-second March. You can also see on graphs. Atmospheric globe station on schools of schools are in the city and there is no atmospheric station outside of city, where is our fourth birch. Is the same for all birches. It can be concluded that atmospheric factors are similar in the city and outside of the city. The full size or leaves reached in the last week of April, you can see on graphs. The leaves on the birches which are growing in the school park of Dubovac reaches the largest size that sixteen millimeters. This is graph on the right side. The smallest are the leaves of the birds that grows in school park of Bania. This is graph up left. The birch tree outside of the city has the largest leaves, about sixteen millimeters. See, this is graph left below. One of the activity in campaign is Carbon Around Me and these are activities that were part of science, chemistry and biology curriculum. In science, students learn about photosynthesis, the structure of the leaf and chloroplast. In the biology, students made model of cells and learn about process of photosynthesis at cellular level. And in chemistry, you can see on the picture, you can, students learn about carbon cycle.
Now you can read over students explain what happens in the process of photosynthesis. She speaks in Croatia and now you can hear it.
Also, this is activity four, Carbon Around Me. The students measure the height of the tree with a mobile app and students measure the circumference of the tree with tape measure, you can see on the picture. Then with the globe calculator, they calculated the carbon storage and total biomass. The upper table show the total biomass and carbon storage for birch tree that grow in Bania School Park and birch tree that grow outside of the city. The table below show the date of the birch trees. The table below shows the date of the birch trees that grow in school park of Dubovac. The students learned that the larger the circumference of the tree, the greater is biomass and carbon storage. The age of tree was calculated from circumference, so we concluded that old trees have more carbon storage than young trees, so we concluded we must save the old trees. This is the picture of color green scale in Autumn European Phenology Campaign 2021. Also, the students from Bania School created a video with topic interview with the tree and you can see this video. This is other video, other video from Dubovac Primary School. The students making a video for University of Biology in Zagreb for future biology teacher, how we learn science in school park.
Dobar dan, ovo je učenica iz prirodne učenika osamne škole Dubovac. Mi imamo sada prirodu tako da se vidi da i priroda može biti u prirodi u našem školskom parku. Koristimo učenicu u nastavi prirode kad obrađemo temu energija, ciklu si u prirodi. Jedinstvo žive i nežive prirode. Pa sad možemo vidjeti mjerenje hisine drveća jer govorimo i radimo sada na temu proizvođači ključni organizmi.
Mjerimo obseg drveća. Ovdje mjerimo listanje i pupanje breza.
Mi ovde mjerimo životne unijete i temperatuju tla na 5 i 10 centimetara.
This is our video and during European Phenology Campaign, we shared the results of a measurement observation with community, participate in webinar and share the results and experiments on school website and you can see on the picture. And this is a benefits and impacts for our students. Students collecting data, learning about environment, notice changes, learning to be patient, persistent, developing teamwork and critical thinking, getting to know the global scientific community, cooperation, developing communication skill, learning English language especially and making. And also we have some benefits as teacher. This is benefits impact for teachers, communication and cooperation in project development and application of knowledge of biology and chemistry, research and creative approach to learning and development of science competitive system through globe protocols. And we have some recommendations for teacher who will want to participate in next 2022 and 2023 Phenology Campaign. Example, chose a tree that's close to the school, the students can observe each day when they came to school, collaborate with other globe teachers in a local community for easier communication, posting activities on the pamphlet or school website. Pamlet is because we collected lot of measurements, data, observation, pictures and others, so we put on pamphlet and on this way we can easily share with students and with globe community. So we can see one example of pamphlet.
Yeah, this is example for European Phenology Campaign from 2021. We put our pictures and/or our activity on the pamphlet. And now it's interesting to see the snow was in spring, that's 6th March. We put graphs, everything. And again, snow, 1st April. And we noticed that after that snow, the leaves are more smaller than the leaves in the birch who was in town. This is the birch in sub-area. Yeah, you can see the leaves. This is from spring, I can show you from autumn. Our birch two in sub-area. This is in schoolyard. Color change. Leaves fall down. Gray, yellow birch. Okay. Now we can go to other. And it's recommendation involvement in globe campaigns.
Yes. And this, in the end, we have some plans for future globe research projects. The idea for this project came on April 2022, when we participated on globe webinar Urban Heat Island Effect, when Mr. Kevin Čajkovski explained the heating the land surface. We found the learning activities on the globe website, how easily teaching the students about heating land surface. So we started the project on June 14 and the name of project will be Air Conditioned by Trees. You can see on the picture, students measure with infrared thermometer surface temperature. At 12:00 PM, 12:15 PM, the students opened the parcel on sunlight grassy surface in the school park of Bania and in the school park of Dubovac. At 12:30 after 15 minutes, the students measured the current air temperature on globe station Bania and Dubovac, the temperature of soil on 5 and 10 centimeter and they measure surface temperature on three places, below the parcel, below the birch tree, picture left below, left, a picture left on the grassy surface and on the sunlight grassy surface. And the project will be ended 23rd September when Autumn will begin. And this is all. And thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Can I stop share?
Go for it, yeah, you can stop sharing. Thank you all so much. We'll now open the floor for some questions, we already have one. I'm gonna go ahead and let's see, we're gonna look at our question, we have a question from Sandro and a comment. So one of the strong points of the project is to use, is the use of no cost tools, non-technology. But don't you think that the use of drones could introduce an interesting expansion of the research of the microclimate generated by a tree? And that's something for all of you to think, maybe just to think about, the use of drones in the phenology campaign.
So maybe I can react. First of all, I would like to thank Ankit and Sniežana for this great and inspiring presentation. I really always enjoy so much to look into what you are doing, it really brings a great inspiration. And about the question of Sandra, Sandra, it's a really interesting idea and I would like to talk to you more sometimes about it. But I have to say, we haven't so far think about using drones. Although in globe check, we already have one drone, so perhaps we can think about it and give it a try as a sample. But yeah, that's something that we haven't considered yet within the campaign and I'll be really happy to hear any ideas from you and any suggestions on how you would do such activity or how would you plan it.
We have one question, how how we calculated the age of tree? It exists one calculator in Excel program. You only must put circumference, you measure circumference of your tree and pick up the space of your tree and calculator alone calculated the age of tree, it's very simple.
Yes, but we have, we have special table with some different species of trees, how different species grow in diameter per year. This is different for birch, for oak, lime tree. And I know and we know that birch tree grow about 2 centimeter, 2 and half centimeter in diameter per year. So if you know circumference, we can calculate the year of how a tree is old because if you don't have globe calculator. But you must have this table with species, with three species. But the globe calculator is the easiest way.
Can we get the table?
Yes. Yes.
I'll look into that.
I can.
Yes, I have table.
I can, I can send to Lenka or Grace.
That would be great, we can share, yeah.
I have this in bed, I can put in the chat this now.
Perfect, thank you.
May I send to Grace or Lenka?
Yeah, and I want to add that all the materials that are like available or created for the campaign, they are all available at the globe.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So if you, if you are interested in anything that is used for the phenology activities or also for the carbon activities, you can always come to the Phenology Campaign site on the globe website and download it there, so it's available.
If you have some questions here, does anything else influence?
I think Maria has her hand up. I think Maria has her hand up. Maria, do you wanna unmute yourself?
Hello, please, hello. First of all, congratulating you, excellent project, I completely love it. It is very inspiring and I have a little question. We have to participate with the trees that you show in the program or can we participate with our national tree? So it must be one of those trees because the only one we have in the Caribbean is the fig tree.
So perhaps I can, I can start answering. For the campaign, we chose these seven tree species and the reason was that these species are common all over our region, so this campaign is intended to the schools in our region and we wanted to have some trees that are common. So if a school from the north and the school from south decide to cooperate, they can find the same tree and see what the difference in seasonal changes is. So that is why, but of course, in your region, feel free to follow or focus on any tree that's available for you and as Ankit and Sniežana mentioned in the presentation, it's very important to have the tree available, have it close so you can reach it easily because you will have to reach it quite often.
Okay, so this is a very good project to start in the Caribbean with our regional trees. So can I invite you for a presentation in the Caribbean? So we can start a program like, like the one you are conducting right now?
Yeah, sure. At least speaking for myself, I'll be really happy to share the knowledge and it will be great to have collaborators from other regions as well.
Okay, thank you.
Great collaboration, that's all what this meeting is about, wonderful, thanks Maria. There's a few other questions in the chat, Lenka, if you saw these. One that come, that came from Bara. How many students are involved in regular phenology observations at your schools?
So perhaps it's to Sniežana and Ankit?
About, in school, in Dubovac School, about 15.
About 10. About 10 students.
And speaking generally for the campaign, this is quite common, 10, 15. We have some school with like 80 students involved, but then it's like more school teams, more teachers participating from one school and.
During the campaign, we have COVID and others, isolation and 15 or 20 students, we must only we haven't always 20 students, some week is 10 because are real or are in isolation, yes. We have question for Zod and Petro about does the does anything else influence on tree circumference grow beside the species? We investigate humidity and we don't know answer yet, but yes. But we know that in ideal condition, birch tree grow 2 and half centimeter in diameter per year. This is the ideal. We must investigate all of this.
And we noticed that the leaves on the birch located in the town area are equal length while the birch in the suburban area was the largest leaves. We think that the possible reasons for this would be that they are surrounded by the other trees in the town area and birch in a suburban area is secluded and not blocked by other trees, maybe. That we noticed in these two years. We must research.
Yes, it's a great topic for student research.
And this year, we started. And this year we, we started to measure the soil moisture on of five and 10 centimeters. And we planning in world that in our research project.
I will also read the answer from Brian Campbell, who's a NASA scientist and he answered to Zoran. So I was just, I think he's the, the, the person who knows the most about the trees as he's leading the trees around the globe campaign. So I will read his answer. So he writes that also the tree circumference is affected by growth, growth at global radiation precipitation, soil nutrients and the other factors. And he shared a paper with you in the chat. So you might want to read the paper shared by Brian. Brian, would you like to add something to this topic?
No, I just wanted, you know, there's lots of, of course, variables involved, you know, looking at tree circumference and, you know, adding to it and as Zoran mentioned it, as was mentioned by the speakers here, you know, it has a lot to do with tree species as well. So with the 78,000 tree species on the planet, it's a tough thing to, to answer specifically. That's why there's so many different variables.
Okay, thanks a lot, Brian. It's our great help for the campaign and a great source of very interesting information and materials. And so thank you, Brian. And although I would maybe speaking about this topic, I would like to invite Dorian to, who share with us an offer that she could show to those who are interesting. The NASA's globe precipitation measurement mission tool, which could help anyone who's interesting in seeing the correlation between the tree growth and the number of or amount of precipitation. This tool can be helpful. So Dorian, would you also like to say a few words about this?
Of course, I would be so happy to. I've so watched, I mean, I've so enjoyed watching this, this program that you have developed and watching it grow and grow and you know, seeing all the things that you do. So something that I would love to offer and that is to provide anyone who wants to, I put my email information in the chat. If you send me your latitude and longitude for where you take your, your tree measurement, I can send you the GPM data. And that's the global precipitation measurement data. We're a satellite that goes around the world. We cooperate with a lot of other satellites that send us data and therefore we're able to collect data from all over the world every 30 minutes telling us how much precipitation is falling from the clouds to the ground. Now, what I would send to you will be the last 22 years of precipitation measured by this satellite and the predecessor to this satellite, the TRIM mission. And I'll send it to you so you have it monthly for the past 22 years as well as seasonally. Because I think that would be really neat for your students to look at and unpack. And then I'll also at the same time send you the data recipe in a one pager that will help you to be able to access and get this data by yourself. But I'll go ahead and start off and get the data for you and send it to you as long as you send me an email and let me know you'd like it. So so happy to help out. Love to include the NASA data with the data that you're collecting with globe. And that way you're kind of getting the, you know, the global picture from above as well as your data from below. And what a neat way to compare and contrast and also take a look at that data and see if you can see any impacts.
Thanks a lot for that, Dorian. I think it's a wonderful opportunity to use the data and if anyone would like to learn more, there's Dorian's email in the chat. So yes, it's, I really think it's worth checking the data and try working with the tool. And I see Christina Buffington.
Hi, first of all, great presentation. All of the presenters were amazing and I loved all of the different ways of looking at the data. It's very inspiring for us in Alaska to look at what you're doing, especially with, with birch. A different birch species than what you have possibly. But my question is if the leaves are too tall, which we're often having. You know, this, this birch right here has a bunch of like suckers that are coming out of the ground. So these are accessible for the kids. But what happens when there's a bunch of birch trees and the leaves are just so high up that we can't actually get to them for green up and green down? How do you handle that? Because sometimes we're having it, we go to look for a birch tree and we're like, oh gosh, there's no leaves that we can reach. So what do you do?
We don't cut our birch trees. They know everybody in the school and our branch are almost up to ground.
Okay. Yes, Nijana, how about at your place?
The same, it's the same. No one touched the birch tree. No one touch except globe students. I can answer on this question about peg if I, you write maybe the students who do the measurement can present what they do to the others. Our students here are on the vacation now. So we, and we are on summer holiday. So I can say I present this campaign, this presentation.
So great dedication.
My students may make many videos and they you can see them.
And are some of those videos on the globe website or are they? Do we, how would we find some of the videos that your students have made?
They are, Lenka, we made videos from 2019 and I don't know where is it.
I think many videos are available at the campaign pilot. So I will share in a moment, I will share a link with you. I think there's a great source of inspiration for like videos or presentations. And there are also links to pilots and wakelets. So I could see in the chat that someone asked for links to your pilots as well. So you can find everything there and I'll share with you the link to the pilot, but you can also again, reach it at the campaign website. So there is a link to it. Oh, Dana, thank you very much. There's the pilot already. So you can find it there. Yeah. And I could see some questions from Bo Lebo, but I think this was sent directly to me and I'm sorry, I just couldn't follow. It's, there are so many comments. So perhaps if you would like to speak to us and just say the question.
Oh, they're just, just how did the kids get affected? Are they more compassionate and are they more secure by working with the trees and feeling that they see change every day and they see growth and they see natural processes?
So the question was how they, how do they
React.
React.
Yeah, does it change their personalities and their goals?
I think Ankitza, Sajana, it's more question to you, work directly with students.
But they will love doing that activity with green up and green down. They are very excited and we love that.
Yes. Same.
It's awesome.
It's not difficult. It's not difficult to watch, watch tree. This year first, this year first and second class, watch two, one birch tree for the first time. This is kids of seven, 10, eight years old and they observation one birch tree and how color was changing autumn 2022. It was cost nothing. This is a science in elementary school. This is the, I think this is the beginning of elementary school in my school.
I must say or share one response that we got through the feedback form for the campaign. And one teacher wrote me that the students, they actually realized that trees are not kind of a furniture of the park. But they are living creatures, living organisms, and it's completely changed their like view on the, on the, on the trees, on the, on the plants even. So this is something that really touched me and yeah, I found it very important. So. But I'm afraid we are running out of time already. I don't know, Grace, what, what do you say?
We are at time. Thank you so much, Lenka. Thank you all so much for joining this session. So beautiful to hear from, from the teachers and everyone regarding this. There's a lot of talk in the chat about expanding the European Phenology Campaign. I know we might already be starting going into the Caribbean, but really thinking about next steps. Where can we make this maybe a global campaign? So there's lots to think about there. So thank you all so much for sharing your insights and from your students. I'm going to encourage everyone to please join the keynote session that starts at 9:30 AM MDT. So we have about a 10, 15 minute break until that begins. And then again, just big thank you to the European Phenology Campaign and all that you do. So big round of applause to all three of you. So thanks so much.
Thanks a lot for this opportunity and for all the wonderful comments and offers of collaboration. We will be really happy to share all we learned and yeah, be in touch. So thanks a lot.
Awesome. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.